To recycling issues and trash issues as we move forward as a town. So on behalf of the board, we have a certificate for you, Ellen. And we want to say thank you for all of your years of service here and for helping the town start its recycling program, maintain it, and seeing it into the future. So, thank you very much. Recycling could not be in better shape. One reason I feel so comfortable stepping down after three and a half decades is that the group that makes up the recycling commission, it's always been true, but now it's as ever. So you are in very, very good hands, and it's been a joy to be a part of it. Thank you. And the other person that we are recognizing tonight is Paula McWilliams, who has served for 23 years as a library technician and associate of the J V Fletcher Library. I'm told that over the course of her career, she has spent about 26,000 hours at the library, helping people, servicing people. There are people who ask for her specifically to help them with their books in their circulation. And we appreciate everything that you've done at the library. I think during the pandemic, something that we all knew anyway, but even became reinforced just how important our library is to the residents of Westford and what a vital role it plays here in Westford. And it plays that role, and it keeps that role because of all of the employees and all of the volunteers such as yourself. So, thank you very much for your years of service. We have a certificate for you too. And thank you. And actually, before you speak, Ellen, did you want to say anything?
Well, I would love to say that 1997 was a wonderful hiring year. People may not remember how awful the financial years were from 91 to 94. It was miserable in this town. And Paula was one of our hiries as things started to come back to normal. And her upbeat, cheerful, warm, hostessine manner has just made her beloved at the library. And we're sure we're going to share her with those libraries of the Cape and teach them a thing or two for retirement. So, we're going to miss her a lot.
Well, thank you so much, Ellen. Well, I want to thank the select board of Westford for acknowledging my many years. I have had a really fun time at the library. It's been awesome. And thank you, Ellen, for taking a chance on me. When we met, I was actually a substitute school nurse in town. And it wasn't good money because nurses were never sick because they were exposed to so much. They had great immune systems. So, it was great to be able to join the library. And my goodness, I just can't tell you how much I've enjoyed the people of Westford and the people I've worked with. So, retiring out to Cape Cod, so people that know me should give me a call out there so I won't be lonely. But I wish Westford the best. This is the place that I got roots in my lifetime, and it means a lot to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our 7:05 PM item is an update from Congressman Trahan on current state initiatives and advocacy for Westford residents. We are in touch with her and her office. She's juggling appearing here tonight with votes in the Congress. So, we're waiting for her. But I think let's do a few things that, you know, we can get done fairly quickly in case Eric hears from her, and then we can go back to Lori. So, why don't we? Oh, we don't have minutes to approve anything, do we? Okay, let's start with all the new business. So, as everybody knows, the state has rescinded, the governor has rescinded the state of emergency. We had a declare a state of emergency here in March of, March 17th, 2020. And consistent with the state, I think it's time for us to also rescind our state of emergency. So, if I could have a motion to rescind our local state of emergency declaration?
Yes, I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
And also, oh, I should have announced this in the beginning. I'm sorry. Select Board Member Hazelton is on the phone. He couldn't be with us tonight. So, in accordance with our remote policy, he is calling in. But also in accordance with our remote policy, all of our votes have to be vocal and out loud. So, all those in favor? John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see. What else can we do here? Well, you know what? Let's go to some of the town managers' reports. And let's do contracts and the purchase orders.
Sure. So, we are looking for approval on the following contracts. Paxton Lawn Maintenance and Landscape Company for construction improvements at the Pine Grove Cemetery in the amount of $198,932. Scholar Painting LLC, Westford Academy Wastewater Treatment Facility Tank Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $168,819. Embry and White Elevator for elevator and wheelchair lift services, annual inspections in the amount of $20,445. FM Generator for generator maintenances and inspections in the amount of $7,800. Cooling and Heating Specialist for heating, ventilation, air conditioning service in the amount of $124 per hour. Would you like to do, keep going through contracts or just do those?
Why don't we start with those? Any questions about those? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we are seeking approval for the following purchase orders. Apple Computers in the amount of $144,899.97. Tyler Technologies for Munis Software, $135,029.12. Verizon Wireless in the amount of $95,000. Verizon for voice and data lines in the amount of $35,000. Modular Communications and Backup Sonocast Repeater at the Department of Public Works in the amount of $17,435.20. BSC Group for the Construction Design Phase and Engineering Services for the improvements at the Pine Grove Cemetery in the amount of $14,500. Park Place Technologies for third-party maintenance in the amount of $13,097.1. Comcast for primary rate interface phone connections in the amount of $13,000. Comcast for data connections in the amount of $12,600 for the Technology Department. Patriot Properties for software support in the amount of $12,180. Unified Network Solutions for desktop computers and monitors in the amount of $10,291.80. And onsite engineering for preclerate sampling services in the amount of $10,176.
See, this is what happens after town meeting, and everybody gets their funding. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Okay. All those in favor? John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Scott?
Aye.
All right. Going back to old and new business. Our select board meetings. Last summer, we only had one meeting in August. And in talking with Jody, we're proposing that we only have one meeting in August again this year. I don't know that anybody's going to object to having one less meeting. But I would propose that we do it on August 17th, which is right in the middle of the month. And then I think we're three weeks from each end from meetings. So, if everybody's in agreement to that, we'll schedule our August meeting for August 17th. Okay. The other thing is the time start of our meetings. Because we were remote, we were starting at 7:00. Having to go back into person means that some of us are going to be commuting again as our offices are opening and commuting out of Boston. And it's difficult personally for me to get here at 7:00 because I will also tell you that the traffic is definitely picking up and is going back to pre-pandemic levels, which is too bad. So, I'm proposing that we go back to 7:30 as our start times for everybody. And so, if that's agreeable to everybody, then we can do that.
It's better for me, too.
Okay.
Just trying to see if we have a little technical difficulty here.
Oh, we're having technical difficulties. Okay. Okay, so we'll do that.
Hello.
Hello.
Hey.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you all?
Good. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. We know that you're juggling being with us and votes in Congress, so we very much appreciate you taking some time.
Well, I certainly appreciate your agility in accommodating you. I wish we were in person, but it's going to be a busy couple of weeks and probably a very busy summer. So, thank you for accommodating me.
Oh, Eric is our technological whiz. We had nothing to do with it. We must confess. So, I guess, Representative, I think what would be helpful and useful if, just briefly, what is it sort of in Congress that, you know, you're working on, that Congress is working on, that really will impact Westford and that we will see hopefully some benefits from over the next month or over the next six months to 12 months? So, if you could update us with that, that would be terrific.
You bet. Well, first of all, once again, thank you for having me. And I'm so pleased to be a part of the select board's meeting, to share an update of what we've been working on in Washington, to serve the people of Westford, and indeed everyone across the Commonwealth. So, as you may have read, you know, there are an array of proposals and counter-proposals on a bunch of issues. So, I really do appreciate the opportunity to brief you sort of on the state of play and what I'm working on to ensure that our region enjoys the full benefits of a strong recovery. You know, last November, the American people really did send a clear message to stop the virus, help everyone get back on their feet, and, you know, revitalize our economy and really accelerate our recovery. When it comes to the virus, I think the evidence speaks for itself. You know, on January 1st, just a few weeks after the first doses had been given to the public, fewer than 6 million vaccine doses had been administered. And today, we're approaching 320 million doses. Nearly two-thirds of all adults are fully vaccinated. In Massachusetts, you know, 8.5 million doses have been administered, and more than 4 million of us are fully vaccinated. You know, meanwhile, the number of new cases is falling, and every single community is out of the red. So, even where we were just six months ago, when on a single day, more than 9,000 new cases were reported in Massachusetts and more than 12,000 lives had been lost, this is nothing short of miraculous. So, families in our area were particularly hard hit by the pandemic. You know, I'm reminded of the loss of Maria Cryer, a nurse at the Light Care Center of Neshoba Valley, where more than two dozen residents and employees passed due to the virus. And I hope that even as we emerge from COVID, we will also continue to keep in our hearts those who lost a loved one or are suffering from the virus's lingering effects. You know, over the last year, billions in federal aid have gone toward developing therapies and purchasing PPE and supporting the distribution of the vaccine. And while those funds were important to this effort, we should bear in mind that the real credit goes to the thousands upon thousands of dedicated nurses and doctors and other public health officials who risked their lives day and night throughout the pandemic. And, you know, when I was diagnosed with COVID, I had long conversations with our public health administrators right here in the town of Westford. And, you know, we're just grateful for all the hours folks worked to get us through this. We certainly owe them an incredible debt of gratitude. And while there are some, you know, pockets of vaccine hesitancy that will require continued encouragement and support, I really am optimistic that we're on the road to recovery. But with that said, I will turn to the items that are still on our to-do list, finishing the job to get everyone back on their feet and finally delivering on our promise for a 21st century infrastructure package. I'll start with aid for our small businesses. You know, across the country, America's 30 million small businesses employ nearly half of our private sector workforce, and COVID struck them like a bolt out of the blue. Last year, you know, due to the pandemic, there were more small business closures than any other year on record. And many of those which were able to stay afloat were hobbled in desperate need of aid. That's why we established the Paycheck Protection Program as part of the CARES Act last year. PPP, which we all talk about pretty regularly, was designed as an $800 billion loan and partial forgiveness program run out of the SBA to keep our small businesses afloat. Now, as some of you have heard or even experienced for yourselves, the rollout of PPP last year left a bit to be desired. You know, the terms were changing and the information flow was inconsistent. And that was coupled with, you know, different states having different, you know, closing or shutting down of plans. But despite those early challenges, thanks to no small measure to the diligence of, you know, many banks and credit unions that stepped up, the program has turned out to be a success. You know, according to the latest available data from the Small Business Administration, more than 100,000 PPP loans have been made in Massachusetts totaling nearly $7 million, averaging $67,000. And in Westford particularly, nearly 740 PPP loans have been approved totaling approximately $75 million. And roughly $33 million of that has been forgiven. PPP was, we've heard over and over again from the food service industry, that the terms didn't work for them or that the level of aid was inadequate. And so, earlier this year, in the American Rescue Plan, we established the Restaurant Revitalization Fund also at the Small Business Administration. And we provided our, I'll just call it RRF, nearly $30 billion in flexible funding to help our restaurants and bars recover faster. Unlike the PPP program, however, the SBA hasn't yet released the full details for the Restaurant Revitalization Fund, so I can't tell you how many small businesses in our region were served. However, what I can share is that in just three weeks, applications for the fund far exceeded available funding with more than 362,000 applications requesting $75 billion in funding. In fact, you know, due to that unprecedented need, the SBA had to close the application portal nearly a month ago. And because the demand for that aid far outstripped the supply, you know, my colleagues and I are pushing to replenish the program with another $60 billion. And that would ensure funding for qualified applicants whose requests couldn't be met with the initial fund allotment. And we'll continue pressing for that additional relief. If you're talking to your, you know, your restaurants who feel shut out, let them know we're working to replenish those funds. But beyond helping our small businesses survive, it's also been a fundamental goal for this Congress and the White House to give a lifeline to state and local governments. You know, after all, most often when the power of water is cut off or an eviction notice is sent, you all are on the front lines fielding the calls for help from those who need it. And that's why in March, we included $350 billion in state and local aid in the American Rescue Plan. You know, the only prior direct COVID-related aid to help our state and local governments was $150 billion that we fought to include in the CARES Act over the ejections of the prior administration and their allies in Congress. But this $350 billion was long overdue by the time we passed it this year. And of that $350 billion, $195 billion is being distributed to state governments, $65 billion to counties, $45 billion to urban areas, and $20 billion for so-called non-entitled communities like Westford. So, it's important to note that the Treasury Department is issuing funding to non-entitled communities to the states, which then must, you know, reallocate them to the local governments. You know, altogether, Massachusetts is getting $8.7 billion. And of that, A and F tells us that Westford is eligible for approximately $7.4 million. So, as a general matter, these funds are a bit more flexible than the CARES Act relief that Westford and other communities received last July. You know, the general guidance is that the funds can be used for services needed to contain the virus, including vaccination programs, testing, contact tracing, purchasing PPP, and things like that. It can also be used to make up for the loss of municipal revenue based on a comparison from the last full fiscal year before COVID. And it can be used to make necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband. I'll also note that the inclusion of an expanded child tax credit in the American Rescue Plan, this is a tremendous victory for working families and putting an end to child poverty. The new version of the CTC provides children and their families with additional payments throughout the year that will help with the costs of food and childcare, diapers, healthcare, clothing, and taxes. You know, poor working and middle-class families are receiving the same monthly payments, $250 per month per child and $300 per month for every young child. So, starting July 15th, roughly 39 million households will begin seeing their monthly payments automatically with no action required. For the 3rd congressional district, this change will benefit more than 129,000 children and their families, nearly three-quarters of the children in our area. So, the average benefit for 44,100 households will be $2,600. But that benefit will rise to an average of $4,300 for families with children that are living in poverty. You know, this change will lift 820 children just in the 3rd district alone out of poverty, including 2,800 kids under the age of six. So, you know, for any families who are watching, who may be eligible but did not file taxes in 2019 or 2020, please go to www.irs.gov and then click the Advanced Child Tax Credit link to sign up and get those payments. This is an unbelievable benefit for our working families. And so, looking forward, we still have plenty of work to do to fix our infrastructure. There are several moving parts to this, so please bear with me. First, the House is moving forward on infrastructure legislation. Before the end of the month, we'll be voting on a large-scale surface transportation bill. It's called the Invest in America Act, which passed out of the Transportation Committee earlier this month and will be the base text for a broader infrastructure package. But the Invest Act is exclusively transportation-focused. It includes nearly $550 billion to fix our roads and bridges, as well as expand rail access and meet related needs. And of that amount, $270 billion is directed at meeting state and local bridge and highway needs. The vast majority of these funds will be steered by formula to the respective states. Massachusetts is slated to receive roughly $4.5 billion for roads and bridges, as well as nearly $3 billion for transit projects. And as some of you may have heard, the bill also includes earmarks. After a decade-long hiatus, earmarking was brought back under tightened ethic rules to prevent the types of abuses that gave us a bridge to nowhere, if you all remember that. Under the new rules, in most cases, projects need to be already on the State and Local Transportation Improvement Plan. And representatives are limited to submitting a total of $15 to $20 million in requests. And so, I'm pleased to share that 99.5% of the project requests I submitted to the 3rd district, which came out to $19.9 million, are in the bill, including $2 million to make improvements to Boston Road in Westford. And the Boston Road project is designed to improve the connection between the Town Center, 495, and the Route 110 Business District. And so, this will be very important for us to get over the line so that we can deliver those funds to Westford. The bill also includes funding for my requests in some of our neighboring communities, including improvements to Foster Street and Littleton, Kelly's Corner and Acton, and intersection improvements on Route 2A at Willow Road and Bruce Street in Pingleyville between AR and Littleton. And for those of you who rely on the LRTA for your commute, the bill also includes funding to replace a diesel bus with one that is hybrid-electric. So, as I mentioned before, you know, the House is scheduled to vote on the Invest in America Act in just over a week. So, we'll have more to update you soon. Second, we'll be advancing legislation to help communities fix aging water and wastewater infrastructure. You know, this is an issue I've been pounding the lectern over repeatedly over the last two and a half years, and it seems as though we're finally making some progress. The Biden Administration's American Jobs Plan includes $111 billion for our water infrastructure and includes $56 billion in grants and loans to improve water systems, $45 billion to replace all lead water pipes nationwide, including at 400,000 schools and childcare facilities across the country, and $10 billion for PFAS and other water needs, including those of, you know, decentralized or onsite wastewater systems such as many of us have in Westford. So, the House Transportation Committee recently completed work on the Water Quality Protection and Job Creation Act. And that's a bill that I worked on to help increase investments in our wastewater and stormwater infrastructure. The bill also includes elements of a bipartisan bill that I filed earlier this year with Representative Darren Mahood from Peoria, Illinois. You know, relevant to Westford, the bill increases funding for the EPA Stormwater Grant Program to $400 million annually for the next five years. And there is $500 million for a new smart water infrastructure grant program as well that will link communities and improvements that support, you know, real-time monitoring of stormwater and wastewater collection and improved energy efficiency. So, last, it's worth noting that, you know, a bipartisan group of senators have proposed their own $1 trillion infrastructure proposal. And of that, $360 billion would be available for roads and bridges, $100 billion for transit, and $55 billion for water needs. So, you know, at the moment, and it's changing minute by minute, it's, you know, it's unclear whether that proposal will be able to secure 60 votes in the Senate. But the White House is heavily engaged with the Senate in terms of pushing that over the line, and those meetings are happening through the night and tomorrow as well. So, I guess before I wrap up, I'll just note that we're still working to advance aid for our care economy. You know, in April, the White House released its $1.8 trillion American Families Plan, which includes a range of investments that address household needs that have been ignored for far too long. It includes aid to make childcare more affordable so we can get all those women back to work who had to leave during COVID, universal pre-K for all 3- and 4-year-old students, free community college, increased scholarships for those pursuing a teaching degree, and a national paid family and medical leave program so we can catch up to the rest of the globe. You know, as I mentioned earlier, we have a lot to do on our to-do list, but these are all items that the American people have been demanding, in some cases for a long time. We're determined to deliver the best deal possible for you. So, thank you again for the opportunity to talk about all the things that are sort of in motion here in Washington. Happy to take a few questions before I have to run back to the floor.
Sure. I guess one question I have for you, Representative, on behalf of residents and folks here in Westford. What is the best way to contact you or your office to, you know, either for requests or to, you know, make their concerns known or to offer you support or, you know, just to communicate with you?
Yeah, no, thank you so much. That is the easiest question I've ever received.
Well, we like to start with softball questions.
All right, thank you. But no, it's actually, it's a very important question. I mean, one of the things that the team really did well over this past year as well, they were working remotely and caring for their own families and just going through the same, you know, transition that so many of us went through. They were picking up the phone because so many people needed to access resources or get help or rental assistance, food assistance, whatever it be. And so, I'm so happy you asked the question because a lot of times, people don't know that our office is there to be a resource and a connector to all of these programs and services. So, the phone number is 978-459-0101. Our office isn't open up to the public yet, although we look forward to doing that, you know, soon. People are back in the office in a hybrid, you know, format. That phone gets picked up every time. You know, certainly, you know, go to the website, you know, trahan/post.gov. There's a lot of resources and a lot of ways you can contact our office there. And then certainly, you know, we try to stay current like everyone else and posting information that would be useful to the people that we're so privileged to serve. So, you can always follow us on, you know, all the social media handles. It's @LoriTrahan. But yes, definitely call us with any assistance that you might need. That's what we're here for.
Other member? Tom?
Sure, hello.
Hello, Tom.
You've touched on a lot of topics that are near and dear.
You've touched on a lot of topics that are near and dear to our heart tonight and on our agenda tonight. We actually are talking about emergency rent assistance and how to get to a net-zero sort of clean economy posture here in town faster. So anything that you and your team see coming that could help us with those things. And we're also conscious of some of the other cracks that have appeared during COVID times related to mental health, wellness, substance abuse. So, any federal programs that you think might weave their way down through the state or otherwise to us, if you can just make, I know you have already, but just continue to make those connections with us here in town, that helps us to plan.
You got it. You know, I'm, we just had a bunch of hearings. So I'm on a new committee. Last Congress, I was on the Education, Labor, and the Armed Services Committee. This Congress, I'm on the Energy and Commerce Committee, which is, it's a great committee. It probably has the, you know, the broadest jurisdiction of any committee here in Washington. But more importantly, I sit on the Healthcare Subcommittee, which is probably the most coveted committee in Washington, because if you didn't come down here to work on healthcare, frankly, I don't know what we argue. I don't know what you're working on, because it just touches all of our lives, right? And that's, you know, access to, it's access to healthcare, it's making sure that we're prioritizing mental health care, substance use disorder, you know, telehealth, which was such a lifeline for so many folks during, you know, COVID, and prescription drug prices, all of it. But one of the things that we've been focused on is coming out of the pandemic and ensuring that we deal with the epidemic within our pandemic, which is the opioid crisis, which is substance use disorder. You know, many of you may know that I've got a great piece of legislation that we've been working hard to get right, you know, get over the line with bipartisan support, giving doctors the tools that they need to identify addiction or substance use disorder and treat it with medication-assisted treatment and giving them that training so that they can have those conversations. It's a big part of reducing the stigma associated with substance use disorder is making sure that our doctors are opening up that conversation when you're in front of them, just like we do with women. Like I, the women on the select board, no, you can't go to a primary care physician or your gynecologist without being asked, "Do you feel safe at home?" And that is such an important open for someone to get the help that they need, and we need our doctors to be having more of those conversations. The second one is I have legislation to get grants to school districts to help with suicide in our public schools at the middle and high school level. We have seen a rising suicide rate in communities across the Commonwealth, across our country. And certainly, we need to address that with more education, more awareness, more coaching and mental health counseling. And so, we're working on that. But, you know, I will, I'll keep you posted on the pieces of legislation that are moving. I'm hopeful that after hearings like that, we'll be able to mark up those bills and send them to the House for a vote. So optimistic about that happening after we accomplish some of these big packages this summer.
Other questions on the board? Anita?
Hi. Thank you so much for fitting us in. I know you're so, so busy. And I actually am one of your followers on your social media handle for Facebook. And I just wanted to say thanks, because I know you hosted a panel highlighting Asian hate, and luckily, we haven't had any reported cases in Westford against the businesses or community members. But I watched your panel with House Reps Wen Howard and House Rep Grace Meng, so I really wanted to say thank you for that. That was awesome.
Yeah, no, absolutely. It's, I have the privilege of serving with some pretty amazing women, who, when you listen to their stories, you realize exactly what they've overcome. And, you know, we're all in this together in terms of stamping out hate speech and hate violence, which we know is on the rise in our country. And we're going to lead, because there is no place for hate in our home, in our community, certainly in our state or country. So we appreciate you tuning into that. And yeah, that's an important platform for us to, you know, make our stand known. And I'm happy that Westford has been incident-free.
Anything else? Anybody from the audience?
Is there a telephone question?
Absolutely, Scott. So Representative Trehan, one of our select board members is attending by phone tonight, Scott Hazelton, and he, hopefully, I hope you can hear him. He has a question.
So, I mean, in the original American Jobs Plan, there was quite a good chunk of money available for affordable housing, which I think we've had a problem with for many years, and COVID, you know, accelerated that problem. And now, when I hear discussions about the current infrastructure plan, it seems like affordable housing has kind of gone away from that spending. So I'm curious, you know, is that in-house plan, is there a move to fund it some other way? Because that's, to me, as vital as other programs that we're discussing here.
So, your head can forgive me, someone just repeated that it sort of went in and out, so I didn't hear fully the question.
So what Scott asked was that in the original American Recovery Plan, there was funding for affordable housing in that...
The jobs plan, the recovery...
I'm sorry, the jobs plan. There was funding for affordable housing, and he is hearing or seeing that that funding appears not, either not to be there or to have gone away from the bill and is inquiring, because affordable housing is certainly an issue here in Westford. We've got a five-year waiting list, last time I checked, and so he's wondering what the status of that is.
Is that, no, it's a great question. And I would be concerned about that, too. There are a lot of pieces right now that were initially in the American Jobs Plan that are not being embraced by, you know, the Republican senators who are negotiating this, you know, traditional infrastructure package that mostly is around, you know, roads and bridges, broadband, and water infrastructure, all important, but it doesn't take up sort of the climate crisis and our investment in clean energy and a reliable grid, and it doesn't take into account the affordable housing investments that the President put forward. And so, you know, we're going to, we're still going to, you know, put that in our version of the bill. You know, I think the President is, you know, is committed to trying to find where there's common ground and where we can pass something in a bipartisan way, but it's not going to come at the extent of the other investments that he's been talking about and Congress has been, is working on. So, water is advancing in this bill, as I sort of, as I described it earlier, and, you know, we're going to make sure that if we have to, you know, if we have to pass, you know, what's remaining, whether it's through budget reconciliation or other, you know, packages, where we're still at it. So, the affordable housing investment is still very much alive, and it's still very much a part of the American Jobs Plan. What we call this bipartisan agreement might, you know, be something different, but it's too much momentum, especially from our caucus. You know, we hear it doesn't matter if I'm in a gateway city or a town like Westford, affordable housing is one of the single biggest issues right now that's confronting our, working in our middle-class families. So you'll see action on that this summer.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for taking the time to join us tonight. We really appreciate it, Representative. And, you know, we look forward, we'll probably ask you maybe in six to nine months to come back again and to report to us.
I'd love that.
And hopefully, we can do it in person.
But thanks again for the opportunity. It was great to see you all, and I will, there's a lot of pieces that impact Westford, as, you know, we talked about when we opened this conversation, so I'll be sure to keep you all updated on how that's moving along.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
All right.
Have a good evening. Well, that was a lot of good information. All right, so we are back on track in terms of our agenda, and we're at our 7:40 PM item, which is a continued discussion on pay-as-you-throw for solid waste and recycling. And this is a follow-up from our initial meeting, our original meeting about this back in March, where the select board had raised several questions. So Eric and Dan, I believe you guys are leading the show here, so I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, great. So we, first, we're going to kind of go over the items that were missed back in March. There were timelines for implementation for each option we had presented. There was an inquiry about different composting options. Also, there was an inquiry into the school department with solid waste tonnage versus town buildings. And lastly, comparable town savings from other towns that have implemented a pay-as-you-throw program. So just, I hope you don't mind, I was going to run back through some of the original information for those at home.
No, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. So, just high level, here in town, we have approximately 8,000 residents that participate in the program. We have weekly solid waste and bi-weekly recycling collection, partially automated collection of recycling and manual solid waste. We have no limit on recycling allowed, and the current FY22 solid waste recycling proposed budget is approximately $2.1 million.
All right, so this is one of the few charts I have in this presentation. It's just showing the increase in cost going back to FY08, where we had about $1.2 million for all the recycling, solid waste costs, and that has gone over $2.2 million in FY22 budget. And a lot of that's due to the cost to process recyclables, the increased cost to process solid waste tonnage, and the collection contracts as well.
So we showed this map last time. This is just an illustration that the Mass DEP releases that shows different pay-as-you-throw programs across the Commonwealth. You could see that there are 45 curbside, 95 drop-off, and 13 have a combination of both. So in terms of our FY21 budgets, so for solid waste, we have $688,000. Please note in bold, the tipping fee that we're currently paying to Covanta is $74.48. We did have a $40,000 supplement transferred in May, and the overall budget's about $1.3 million. So you'll, please note here, the $90 per tonne is what's going to take effect on July 1. We have negotiated continuously with Covanta collaboratively with many other towns, and unfortunately, this is the way the market's going. So $90 is the best we were able to achieve for FY22. So we're projecting $127,000 increase from FY21 in this budget. Last time, we didn't get into recycling too much. We focused on solid waste, so we wanted to add this. We're approximately $500,000 for the curbside collection, and we budgeted $214,000 for processing fees for an overall budget of about $713,000.
So this is the monthly processing rate for recycling per tonne. And as you can see, we were at $80.50 a tonne back in July. In June of 2021, they were paying us $4.05 per tonne. So we're actually making money off recycling at this point, because the, you know, the commodity market has changed so much that, you know, recyclables are still like much more in demand. So we're actually saving money off recycling budget by recycling. I will say that we did budget $225,000 in the FY22 budget, and hopefully, we don't have to use very much of that at all, if the market continues this trend.
So for all of those of you that have thrown items away that are bulk items in town, so just some information about the revenue on that. So roughly, we're about $18,000 to $21,000 per year. Year-to-date, this year's 20, oh, just under 22. It's probably a little bit higher this year, because it seems everyone's been cleaning out their basements and attics during COVID. So the price right now is $5 for a burnable bulk item or a non-burnable, like a dishwasher or something large, metal would be $30. So we prepared some different options that we kind of went over last time. We provided some comparable communities for each of these this time, which we'll go over. So the first option's the bag model, where residents would be required to purchase pay-as-you-throw bags for all solid waste that would be disposed in town. Benefit to this would be residents would be allowed to use their existing barrels, and the select board could set the price per bags to achieve the desired revenue target for the program. So one town that we found that was very comparable to this was Shrewsbury. They have a cost per bag. They provide two different sizes of $0.75 and $1.50, and they raised roughly $937,000 from 10,140 households. We thought an average household cost would be helpful to look at. It's about $92.40. So as far as pros, we thought it'd be helpful just to look at these. One big thing to point out on the right side is this would be eligible for a $166,000 grant from the Mass DEP. As we go through the options, you'll note that there are some grants mentioned. The DEP grants aren't currently released, but we've been communicating with our DEP rep throughout this process, and they have confirmed that it is very likely that a new program will come out in the fall. And in fact, their pay-as-you-throw barrel program, which we'll talk about next, is their most favorite program to fund. So they said they may even fund a grant application outside of cycle if the town was interested in doing that. So back to the bags a little bit, the bags would be purchased off state contract just to roll out with ease. The town wouldn't actually have to house all these bags. There are vendors in place where we would just, they would manufacture based on what the select board desires, and then the stores that sell them could just call them when they're looking for more bags, and it's shipped directly to them. And the bags would be made of 35% to 50% recycled materials. So as far as cons, obviously, residents would be required to purchase in plastic bags. This would not set us up for fully automated collection. So eventually, we do believe that it would have cost efficiencies in the future if we were fully automated. Right now, you've noticed when Acme Waste comes out throughout town, they have to get out of their truck and manually pick up all of the trash containers and dump it into the bag, which increases their costs and risks for workers' compensation claims. So we do feel eventually it would be good to go in that direction. And this is not Mass DEP's number-one recommended model.
Right. And here's our cost estimate for option number one. So the logic behind these is that we're estimating one bag per household member per week. So you'll see here that, you know, we have a range of estimated household sizes and the annual bags of trash here. So if you're one-person household, there's 52 bags a week, 52 bags of trash per week and so on. So here, we set the price at $1.25 per bag, with the cost of the bag be $0.25 to go back to the vendor, and we're estimating about $1.66 million in revenue to be raised and expense for those bags and vendor costs of $332,000. So that would result in about an estimated overall program revenue of just over $1.3 million.
So we were asked about timelines. So as far as the three different models we're going to be talking about, the bag model would be able to be rolled out relatively quickly compared to option two with the standardized toters. We still do expect to at least have a four- to six-month timeframe to get things rolled out, educate the public. And please excuse the June 8 date, we were planning on presenting on June 8th, so it should be June 22nd. So this just gives a rough idea of the grant cycle and an idea of when we might be able to get the program up and running in town. So option two was the standardized toters, which I had mentioned before. This would provide residents with one 35-gallon standardized toter, and anything beyond that, residents would be required to pay for by use of a pay-as-you-throw bag. So we would still be using overflow bags in this, and they'd be sold similar to what we currently sell bulk stickers. So an apples-to-apples comparison is not always perfect with these programs, because each town does things so differently, but we found that Milton was pretty close. They do use 35-gallon toters, overflow bags, and they also have stickers as well. And you could see the costs here, and they raise about $1.2 million roughly, and the average cost per household's about $204. So the, it's about more than double than what Shrewsbury costs its residents. So this is the most, this is the favorite model for the DEP, the one they try to push the most. These are all the towns that have actually implemented the program. You know, one thing to note is we, right now, we have a three-barrel limit to go down to one, you know, would be a dramatic change in town, so we do just want to point that out. So some pros of this, we would be eligible for some significant grants. There is a grant for not only solid waste toters, but also recycling toters, which would be optional if we were looking to standardize both solid waste and recycling for future contract purposes. Roughly 50% of the town, according to Ellen, if she's still out there, have the wheeled toters already for recycling. So we do believe about 50% would need those. And there is a recycling partnership grant that may be available as well for 62,400. So again, there are vendors who'd be available because we would still have the overflow bags. I mentioned this is the number-one recommended model, and this would set the town up for the future when we do go back out to bid. So the cons, this is definitely a very slow implementation process. When you speak to the Mass DEP, they recommend a year to get this program up and running. We would have to purchase a large amount of toters, house them somewhere, and then figure out a distribution plan to get them out to every home. We do believe based, if we were successful in getting all of the grants, we would require an appropriation of roughly $22,000 to cover the remaining balance. One item is a con is residents that have barrels that may be not useful anymore. They may want to get rid of them. Actually, in talking with our rep from the Mass DEP, they did mention that in another town, they had collected them at their DPW and allowed residents to bring them there and then posted them for free. And they said that all of the barrels were gone, so they were able to get rid of them for completely free. So it's one thing to keep in mind if we wanted to go down that path. And obviously, another con would be residents would be required to pay additional fees for anything beyond the first 35-gallon toter.
Again, we have another chart here to show what we're estimating for option two. So keeping with that same logic where it's one bag for every person, but if we have the first three bags free, we don't estimate that, you know, the households with less than four people would be paying that many fees. And then once you get into a four-person household, it'd be about a bag per week. So overall, with this model, we're estimating about 249,000 in net revenue.
And again, we provided you with a timeline. As I mentioned, this timeline would take a little longer as we're looking at June to next July being the implementation date and with the town applying for grants pretty aggressively in the fall. So this is a, definitely the most complex of the options, which would require not only applying for grants, but procuring all of the items and then distributing, distribution to all the residents as well. And then the other option three, we got into this last time. I think Scott was interested in this option. This is requiring a 35-gallon barrel, non-standardized, and have overflow bag or annual sticker. So the idea here is that if we just simply limit based on gallon size, so there would be a significant portion of the town that would not need to buy new barrels. But there definitely would be some that would have to. So we would still do overflows, or we would do annual stickers with this model. Similar to what you see here on the right, this is the town of Millen. So we would be eligible for a smaller grant, the smallest of the three options, roughly 83,000 for this program. Residents would be allowed to use their existing barrels. Again, we'd have the state bid vendor for bags, and the town clerk's office would sell the annual stickers. Surprise, Patty. So we do expect that this will generate some revenue. But we do, I believe, anticipate this is the lowest of the three options as far as revenue, but Dan can confirm you. I'm correct on that. So as far as cons, you know, less grant funding is going to be available. It would be difficult to enforce without uniformity in the barrels. Other towns have tried to implement similar programs and eventually have changed into the standardized barrels. We actually spoke to our provider, Acme Waste, and they did have some concerns with having this type of program in place. So we just wanted to point that out. And a large portion of residents would likely need to get new gallons, 35-gallon barrels because driving through town, it does seem that a lot, there are a lot of residents that do have larger. And we were unable to find a market equivalent that was exactly like this. As I mentioned, each town is very unique, so we wanted to try to provide you with one as close as possible. And we could not find one that was that identical to this program.
And here's the last chart for option three. Here, we're estimating that, you know, 50% of the four-person homes will purchase a extra bag every week. And then those households with more than four people will just pay for the bulk sticker. So that estimate came out to about 286,000 in net revenue for the year.
And again, your timeline for option three. You could see the rollout for this is more in line with option one. We don't feel as though it would take as long as option two with the standardized toters because there wouldn't be as much logistics involved as far as ordering all of the new toters and distributing them. So another item to consider, we talked about bulk items before. Mass DEP has recommended over the years that we recommend, increase this fee. Potentially, one item maybe to increase it from $5 to $10 for the burnable items. This may increase or double the revenue of approximately 19,000 per year. And there, the con with this is there is the concern for potential increase in illegal dumping, which is the reason why I believe we set it back at $5 several years ago. So as far as composting options, in all of the comparable communities, we found very few communities that have active composting programs. There were ones that had a program, but then stopped doing it for whatever reason, due to the logistics involved. The ones that do offer it typically have a preferred vendor where they do a procurement, and they just direct the residents to work directly with the vendor, and they get a pre-negotiated price for their service that they provide. It, it may not be as worthwhile unless the cost of the balance for disposing in solid waste for compost was actually measured. So there is a DEP grant that they have offered in previous years, but they're not sure at this point if they're going to continue it because according to our DEP rep, they don't believe that it was an overall success. So they're hoping to come up with something a little better in the future to get this off the ground.
All right, so it's the last question. We came out with an estimate for the cost for town buildings for trash. This was actually modeled off something Recycling Commission did. I believe Chris Erickson backed 2019, provided an estimate for the, the school buildings. So for the town with the buildings that we currently have, dumpsters and, you know, other large containers, we're estimating that the total cost for trash removal is about 6,800 per year. And then using the, the information provided by the Recycling Commission, we're estimating that the school buildings cost about just under $19,000 per year.
Can you roll back to the town for a minute? We have, don't we have, included in this is not trash from rec fields, and don't we pick that up? And so I guess I'm just wondering if that should be included in the town estimate.
I think they, do they end up in a dumpster, Eric?
I believe we do seasonally bring a dumpster down there, so we may have some information missing on this chart.
We choose, we choose to have dumpsters. Yeah.
Oh, and that is the end.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you very much for putting all this together. I know it's been a lot of hard work, both by you folks as well as the Recycling Commission, so thank you for doing that. Questions from the board. Tom?
I just had a fact question. So in option two, as you've described at the standardized bin option, the cost to the resident in the community example you gave was $156. Was that the one-time purchase of the bin or what was?
Do you want to go back to that one?
Yes.
Yeah, this, this is the one, and what I'm getting at is it looks like in your financial modeling, you're saying that the resident is long, on an ongoing basis, as long as they're using the standardized bin, isn't paying anything for the trash, additional for the trash in that bin. They're only paying cash out of hand for additional bags that buy.
In access.
But here, this, this, these folks are paying 156 per toter. And these guys are getting a lot more revenue than you talked about in your example. So in this case, do they need a permit on the standardized toter? Are they paying an annual fee for that or what?
So the town manager actually emailed all of the town managers statewide. So we tried to digest all of the information they provided us in addition to what the Mass DEP distributes to communities for information purposes. So in this model, I believe what it was showing was they charge a flat $150, $66 for the first toter. Whereas with what we're proposing, the first toter would be free.
Okay.
So if we did it with this model, the revenue projections would be much more.
Okay, so you could decide to have a fee per toter. You can make that any amount, just like we would decide that. This example has full price. The example you gave later is zero.
The first toter would be free.
Got it.
And I guess we could do anything in between.
In between, okay. Just want to make sure I understood.
It's complicated.
John?
What's our goal here with this pay-as-you-throw?
So I think when we started this last spring, part of our goal was the fact that our recycling and our trash fees are increasing astronomically. And the budget next year is 2.3 million total. And it just keeps going up and up and up. And so one of our goals was to take a look at this and to see, you know, to bring that, that line item under control and to see if there were ways to do that. To, to, and at the same time, is there a way, because we are now getting paid for recycling, as, as you saw, is there a way to increase the recycling by the community so that we can get paid even more?
The recycling piece is, is, I think I understand that. Trash is, and this failed at town meeting, what was it, two or three years ago? Or when was that? When was the last time?
11.
Maybe 11 years ago.
11 years ago.
Well, I think we had something since then.
No, the last time, the last time we dealt with pay-as-you-throw was 11 years ago.
You know, the first option shows that really we're just transferring the additional cost to the individual. And we still have the overall cost of the budget. And it seems like we're going to increase the cost with the other two to the individuals, but not as much. I mean, our two and three, it's still an increase, though, to the, and to the household, each average household. It's an increasing cost here for them. Is there any way that we can get a chart that puts all three of them aside by side so you can compare them?
I'm happy to try.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you, and my concern was, with the first option, of course, was that we were just freeing up another million dollars in the budget by transferring the cost to the, to the taxpayer by having him pay the additional. And that's what, that showed. The other two don't do that. Okay, Tom?
No, just my.
No, no, I get to say.
Absolutely. We just look at it as you.
Come on.
No, my, thank you, but I'm here. I mean, just, so personally, when I, when I looked at this, if you go back in the timeframe covered, the town, the people who live in town are paying a million dollars more than they were 10 years ago on trash. And, and every single dollar you spend on that is something we can't spend on mental support services or educational services or firefighters or first responders. And I just think that it's time that people make that choice actively. Instead of just saying, in a prop-two-and-a-half environment, I'm going to accept a 10%, you know, per tonne trash disposal fee and have that come out of other services. I think for that to happen automatically in a way that's not transparent to the taxpayer is a mistake, in my opinion.
And I think the other thing, I mean, if we decide, and, and we're not going to make this decision tonight. Okay, so, but if we decide that we want to do something with pay-as-you-throw, I think one of the things also we need to talk about is for the cost savings, that, you know, what do we do with those cost savings? Where do they end up in the budget? I mean, and how, you know, how do they get reallocated? And I think that's probably a discussion that we also need to have. It's, you know, as we're making this decision and going forward. So I think, you know, I just throw that into the mix. Yeah.
Okay, the grants that we have, excuse me, the grants that you talk about, are those yearly?
Yes, John, they are, they are put out yearly. The, the toter one is, as I mentioned, the most desirable. And they may potentially fund it out of cycle if the town were interested. They were, we were urged this year to apply for the grants, even if we're on the fence, for implementing pay-as-you-throw.
Scott, I know you're out there. Do you have any questions?
Well, yeah, I mean, I.
No, 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 not you, Scott. Scott.
Anyone named Scott.
We'll get to you. Scott, go, Scott, go ahead. Scott McKay is also here, so he thought I was talking to him.
That's okay. He's a hot star, I'm not. But when, when other towns have done this, have they done it as, or have they done it through town meeting? Because it strikes me as being, I mean, it's like, this is a revenue, this is a tax decrease. It's a, it's a backdoor override. And I don't want it done by the fiat of five people. So what else has to do it? Is it a town meeting agenda item? Or is this a city council or a select board decision in those little towns?
I don't know. So go ahead.
So based on KP Law's interpretation of this, it is a select board decision. So you do have the authority to make that implementation of this.
Right, but we also.
But we have the option to waive that and take the town meeting, correct?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Do we know what those.
Do we know if the towns took it to town meeting or, or not?
We did not collect that data, but we're happy to go back and try to collect it if you'd like.
I think that's.
I think it's important, and I know that, you know, with the stormwater fee, my feeling was that this was a federal mandate mandate, and I didn't want to sacrifice other town programs to accommodate that. And, and the thing with the usage fee that, you know, it pretty made sense to do that as we did do it. You know, this is one where we're saying, well, this line item is growing too fast, and how do we fix that? Well, let's, let's charge more money for it. And that's, that's me, and if we do it as a select board, then nothing says that in two years we can't charge for toters after all, and then raise the fee on toters after all. And I just think that, in the interest of transparency here, there ought to be, you know, as Tom said, it's important to have the discussions in the community about priorities. And I think trash is, you know, certainly not the best use of funds. But we ought to ask people to pay for it some way. And I think that, in that, in the interest of dialogue and transparency, it belongs at a town meeting discussion, that's all.
Okay, Anita?
Yeah, you know, I just wanted to, I maybe reflect a little bit on John's question. And I feel like when you're making this decision of pay-as-you-throw or kind of bringing this into the conversation, you're bringing it to like a household, individual decision, right? If I had to think about how much trash I'm putting out, I'm going to be much more thoughtful about my waste. And that's control that I have. That's control over my pocketbook. If I'm going to do more composting, if I'm going to do more recycling, that's my choice versus processing fees that are outside of my control, right? So that's the perspective that I take when I look at this. I do have one question, though, about Shrewsbury's model of the bags, which I know is very not popular. But how do they deal with compliance? Because like, what if someone just doesn't buy a bag? What do they do? How to, how do, do you know?
I don't know definitively based on that town, but based on my conversations with other communities with similar programs, a lot of the enforcement's solely on the vendor to enforce the program.
Okay. Audience, yes, Christina.
Yeah, Christina Green. I just wanted to add to your Shrewsbury question because I grew up in Shrewsbury, so I have several family members that are still there. If you are not in a paid bag, your trash does not get collected from the vendor. But they also have, I forget what the person's title is, but it's either a recycling coordinator or somebody whose job it is to go around.
Trash law.
And check from time to time. They implemented this system over 10 years ago. Shrewsbury is over it. Like, they, they just know the drill. They buy the bags. People compost like you wouldn't believe, and they have gotten their trash down to almost half of what Westford puts out.
Interesting. Thank you. Other, any other questions or comments from the audience? Sue?
Hi, Sue Thomas, Seven Old Homestead, former member of the Recycling Commission, present member of Clean Energy and Sustainability. There's a lot here to continue discussing. I think one point I would make is that, as far as I am aware, and I would like someone to check, there has never been a successful pay-as-you-throw program implemented without a person who about 20% of their job is, at least, managing, educating, and enforcing the program. Our enforcement in Westford is really an honor system because of the issues of litigating between. between the vendor and the resident. So we rely on people knowing the rules and following the rules. We have a system in our contract to find the vendor for noncompliance if they pick up when they shouldn't. However, there's no one making sure that happens. So we effectively have a three-barrel limit right now. When we went from five to three, our only option was to rely on the vendor for compliance, and our goal was not to increase revenue, but to decrease cost. You guys are all talking about increasing revenue. But the other piece of this is decreasing your tipping fee. And I don't see numbers reflecting that. But I think the first response of anyone who has limited trash is to dump everything in recycling. I don't have room in my trash, and it goes to recycling. We're going to contaminate recycling. So while we may get 30% more recycling that we should have had all along in our recycling, we'll also get everything else that doesn't fit in that bag. So, because that's the easiest thing. I've got a big toter, I've got a little trash bag. I've got stuff I've got to get rid of. And that's what every community runs into when they implement pay-as-you-throw. So our recycling will be contaminated, rejected as trash. And the last time I was involved, and that was granted a while ago, contaminated recycling was more expensive to us than trash on a per-ton basis. So we need to be careful about the implementation, and it will require attention. And the grants are not annual, you know, ad infinitum. They're for the implementation of the new program. So when, the grant may be a two-year grant, but it's not an ongoing revenue source for the town, because we've instituted a DEP program. So the other thing I would, having looked at the data years ago and being involved in the contracting, we were one of the few towns that was still what's considered manual collection. But if you looked at our rates, that we were paying strictly for collection versus automated collection, we had less vendor choice, because fewer vendors wanted to take on the workers' comp complications of people lifting 50-gallon barrels or higher. But we did not have substantially higher contract rates. So I'd be cautious when the vendor tells you that they're going to give you a lower rate if you go to automated. What they're doing is they're asking the town to pay for them to have lower claim rates. So a lot of towns value standardized curbside appearance, and they like standard toters. And it does make it easier for whoever's in charge of compliance to drive by and see that compliance is happening. Because I don't know if any of you have tried to assess the size of your trash barrel yourself, but it can be very difficult if it's not marked on there. Whether it's 32 gallons, or 42 gallons, or 35 gallons, or 45 gallons, you can't tell from the street. So asking the vendor to tell from the street, the hauler, is not the most practical enforcement mechanism. But they can tell if you have a standardized bag. So I agree that the bag puts the incentive in the right place in terms of households thinking about how they manage their solid waste. But for the town, I think you need to consider what we're actually achieving. Are we trying to reduce our costs and increase our revenue? And let's be honest about what that looks like. Because you're talking about increased revenue. Theoretically, we're also decreasing costs, because people will reduce their solid waste. But they will also try a lot of other maneuvers while they're figuring out how this system works. And we may see some blips in our recycling as a result. And manpower issue is, is real. I, I think, now, the good news about that is that, as a rule, that manpower pays for itself. We are very high in our solid waste per household rate in town. We think of ourselves as a green town, but we are no longer a green town relative to other towns. So there's plenty of work to be done where the town can save money on those tipping fees to pay for a person who's paying attention to enforcement. And it will more than pay for itself, based on the figures I've seen and that we heard about at town meeting. So it doesn't have to be a full-time person, but it needs, it's a day-in, day-out job. And I speak from experience, because I was the chair when we changed vendors, when we had a vendor go under, when we had bad winter storms, when we went from five barrels to three barrels. And we had that education component at that time, and the press, and all of those things. And it was a portion of my day, every day during those transitions. So I would caution you, if you think that the town manager's office has the bandwidth to do that right now, because we're a very lean town, and they're extremely busy, and they do an awesome job. And so this is by no means a criticism of the town. It's just to prepare you for blips. We want to have a, this is a really great policy in many ways, but we want to implement it well so it's successful. Because you don't want to come back and try to do it a second time, or explain it away, or, you know, what have you. Because you're effectively going from three barrels to one barrel now with trash. So you're doing this again, just in a different way. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, Scott McKay.
Scott McKay. I couldn't figure out how you knew I had a question. So I would also agree with the comment that you just made about human nature being what it is. If you have something you want to get rid of, you can always sneak it in someplace that isn't costing you as much money as buying a bag. And I think that's going to happen. The other comment is, and I don't have a horse in this race anymore, is that there are several vendors in town, businesses in town, that the town now is going to directly compete against. So anybody who sells trash bags, anybody who sells wastebaskets, anybody who sells barrels, now those individuals, those businesses, are going to lose that business. And I think that's something that needs to be looked at through the committee, whoever else is doing it, because that, that could be a significant number for some of these businesses. And then if you have bought anything plastic recently, and I'm talking big stuff, like barrels and everything else, I hope you've got these costs nailed down, because they're out of sight. Everything is crazy with plastic right now. So this price could be fictitious if you go back to them and say, oh, remember that $150? And they laugh at you and say, how about $250? Now it skews all the numbers that we've come up with.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Any other comments from the board? Okay, well, as I said, we're, we're not making a decision tonight. I think we have a, you know, I think we have a lot to think about. I think the board members and some audience folks have asked for some additional information from you guys. So this is an ongoing discussion. It's not something to address Sue Thomas's issue. It's not something we're about to enter into overnight without giving it a lot of thought and consideration, not only for what we can realize, but also what some unintended consequences might be as well. So it's an ongoing discussion, and we appreciate everybody's input. And we will continue to talk about it and bring it back to the community. So thank you all very much. All right. We're at our 8:00 PM item, which is a presentation on exploring a potential performance contract to implement various energy efficiency projects at both town and school buildings. Good evening, gentlemen.
Hello.
If you can just introduce yourselves, and the floor is yours.
Sure. Paul Fox, Director of Facilities.
Hello. Matt Rieger, A Castle Road, member of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee.
Okay.
So I'm actually going to walk us through this presentation. I'm back. And Paul and Matt may jump in to help me along the way. So this is something we've been talking about for the last couple of years. Paul had mentioned he was hoping to implement a performance contract in town. He had found other cities and towns and school districts have implemented similar projects where they were able to accomplish several energy efficiency projects, and were able to fund the projects through the savings achieved from those projects. So pretty much, what is an energy-saving performance contract? So it's an agreement to install a portfolio of energy savings measures. We're talking about things like control systems, heating system upgrades, lighting improvements. So the premise here is that it's going to have enough guaranteed savings to fund the overall projects associated with the debt service for the projects. So there are, there is state legislation that allows municipalities to contract for this through one single streamlined process. So some comparable communities that have had performance contracts, so our neighboring town of Chelmsford had an $18 million project, Watertown at about $8 million, and Dyton Rehoboth at $19 million. So you could see that they range from annual savings from energy, water, and operational ranges from $500 to $700,000 per year. So these are projects that we, we feel are good, comparable to what we're trying to do here in Westford. So again, some projects that we might be interested in pursuing, LED lighting upgrades, different boiler replacements, rooftop unit replacements, variable frequency drives on motors, solar and other renewable energy projects, which is really a driving force in town right now, low-flow plumbing fixtures for water conservation, and different energy management software programs and controls. So this chart just shows the basic premise of the funding for a performance contract. So on the left-hand side, you'll see that this is illustrating the operations budget for the town hypothetically, for your utility costs. And when you implement a performance contract, that chunk in the green, orange, and blue would essentially be what is funding. You're going to achieve energy savings operationally, which would provide the cash flow needed to fund the overall debt services associated with the projects. The performance period could be up to 20 years in Massachusetts. So once the performance period is over, all of those savings would essentially be the towns in future years. So what have we done locally? In 2013, we had the Green Communities Grant Designation. There were five grant criteria for this, one of which was to reduce our energy consumption by 20%. We're still working towards this goal. We've worked with the DOER. We've had representatives from University of Amherst, or UMass Amherst, help us try to analyze our energy consumption, and we continue to do that every year. We've completed many LED lighting projects, energy management upgrades, et cetera. We've received about $1.4 million from the Green Communities Grant Program. So it's actually been a great thing for Westford. Unfortunately, there are more and more cities and towns becoming green communities, so the funding is becoming very competitive. And actually, they've decreased the amount you can get each year. Last year, we were limited to $100,000, where in other years, we've actually received up to $250 multiple years in a row. And there was the town meeting resolution that happened last year to reduce fossil fuel and achieve the Commonwealth of Massachusetts limit of net-zero greenhouse gas by 2050. So that is something the, the new Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee is working on diligently, and we hope to work with them, and we hope that this would help with that process as well. So this is just a flow chart. It talks, lays out kind of what a performance contract is and the different steps. So we'll be looking more at the top right now, as far as assembling a team, creating energy baseline. I'll dive into these a little bit further in the next few slides. So we're going to talk a little about an owner's agent. So these are complex projects. As you could see, some towns and cities have funded 10- to 20-million-dollar projects, could be up to 20 years. So we really think it would be in the town's best interest to procure an owner's agent to represent the town's interests, to have a third party. They could provide services like providing support during contract negotiations and reviewing the verification and measurement standards for ensuring that we have the energy savings that we're supposed to be achieving through the project. So there is a grant that comes out annually through the DOER. Last year, it was for $12,500. We're thinking it's going to come out in the next week or two, and we hope to apply for that, to be able to obtain funding to put towards this purpose. So through the streamlined process that I mentioned, through the state legislation, we would have to reduce or release a solicitation, a bid solicitation, to hire an ESCO company. That would be an RFP or an RFQ, which we'll discuss further. So some of the most basic things that are important to this process is establishing an energy baseline. Because we are a green community, we get a free program called Mass Energy Insight from the state, where all of our utility data, natural gas, electricity is automatically uploaded every month into this program. So we can track our energy consumption by building annually. We've been doing that for several years. So that'll be highly useful for something like this. And completing a building inventory. So I know there, there were several committees that worked on the facility audit that was done several years ago, and my predecessor, John Mandorati. So we do have a good start on this, as far as facilities inventory for all of the town assets. This would be another thing to determine which buildings would be included in the overall performance contract. So once we start working with an energy service company, the first step is really they lay out a preliminary energy assessment, which is essentially just a high-level overview of different projects that they believe they can implement here in town, and the estimated energy savings that would be associated with each of those. If the town was interested, after seeing the performance, or the preliminary energy audit, we would have to move forward into what's known as the investment-grade audit, which, Dan, if you can move forward one slide. So now, in order to do an investment-grade audit, it's a more in-depth review of our buildings to really dive in deep to what projects may be, what the payback periods might be. And it's really a major time commitment for an ESCO to have to do this. So ESCOs require a, what's known as a break fee, or an IGA fee, of anywhere from $0.40 to $0.10 per square foot of buildings included in the audit process. If the town were to move forward with an IGA process and then decided that we wanted to move forward with a performance contract, that cost is rolled into the overall project cost. If the town decided, you know, this is great, but we don't want to do it through a performance contract, we're going to try to complete these projects through traditional bonding, then we would be required to pay this money, which we won't know the exact dollar amount until we go through an RFQ or an RFP process. So there are some different options for financing. I included in the packet, if you have signed for a fund read, it's MAPC's Guide for Performance Contracting. So there's traditional bonding, municipal lease funding, utility incentives and grants. We always try to get as many of those as we can. Qualified energy conservation bonds. We've actually talked with a consultant, and we do not believe there's currently qualified energy conservation bonds available, but we certainly would do our homework to ensure that we're getting the town the best rates if we move forward. So as I mentioned, the heart of this whole process is the performance contract, which happens after the IGA. So really, there's a lot of steps that would have to get, fall into place in order to get there. It actually would require a town meeting vote to move forward with the overall performance contract. So we really wanted to bring this forward today as like an introductory, try to get the board's support, and allow some time for some questions. Dan, is there anything else just left? So yeah, as I mentioned, 20 years. You can go through this slide, I already mentioned this. And so there's three requests that we have before the board tonight. You know, we're looking for overall support for the proposed ESMA project, Energy Service Management Agreement project. And we are looking to use some funding from the DRA capital account to begin working with an owner's agent, approximately $15,000. Right now, the current balance in that account is $75,000. And we would hope that this would be offset by a grant, if we're able to obtain it. Last year, the state released $250,000 for technical assistance grants, and they do enjoy funding performance contract technical assistance. So there is a good likelihood that we could obtain some funding. And ultimately, we would require some support at 2021 special town meeting for the break fee or the IGA fee. So, Matt, Paul, did I miss anything?
No, I thought that was an incredible run-through for that. It's a lot of information all given to you at once. I guess my summary of it from my perspective is, fortunately, it takes money to ultimately save money and energy. And this just provides an avenue to do that, where you're able to get the cost savings upfront and then implement all the projects ultimately, with a guaranteed savings beyond it.
Yeah, the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee has been talking about this opportunity for about 18 months. And the committee is in full and unanimous support of this proposal. This is an opportunity for the town to improve our municipal and school buildings for years to come in a financially responsible manner. And this project will reduce the town's annual energy expenses and our carbon footprint immediately. Furthermore, having the town make investments... Furthermore, having the town make investments in energy efficiency and renewable energy options would demonstrate strong leadership towards the town's climate, town's climate action resolution of net zero by 2050. So thank you for your consideration on behalf of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee.
Thank you. Thank you both. A lot of information, as Paul said, that's just been thrown at us. Questions from the board? John?
Paul, do you have any idea, just as a kind of a ballpark estimate, or what we'd be talking about here, knowing the number of facilities and the potential for each of those facilities? Do you have any order of magnitude number you could pull out of your hat?
Sure. For the, for the amount of projects that we would implement, it would be very well into the millions would be my...
Millions, but how many millions?
I'm, I'm going to guess that if we were to shoot for just a complete offsetting number and not invest anything further into it, we would have the option if we choose to continue to invest into it, we could certainly do that. I'm going to guess that there's probably somewhere around 4 million, 3 to 4 million dollars for like a net zero savings. The good news for the town is that on the school side at least, there's like, the energy or the lighting upgrades alone will carry a lot of projects moving forward from that. They're relatively cheap, and they yield a good payback period. So we'll certainly be able to get a lot through with those alone. But yeah, I'd probably say probably about 3 to 4. Eric?
Eric, I think can help with, before you move on, John, I think Eric can also...
Yeah, I was just going to say, so one of the benefits to performance contracting is that the select board in the town can really set the parameters as far as how much debt do we really want to incur? We could size the project. If, if 2 million's our target or 10 million, we can find a project that fits within those parameters. I can tell you from example, when I worked for the town of Ashland, we obtained a project that was a 15-year performance period, and the project was fully funded through the energy savings, so there was no tax increase to the residents from the project itself. So if you have a right mixture of the projects, as Paul alluded to, some projects are really great in terms of energy savings such as lighting projects. But when you start looking at boilers, they may have a 90-year payback period. So having the right mixture of those low-hanging fruit and large projects, you can actually have a project that fits within the parameters the town's looking to have for debt service.
Do you think this would help with our attempts to standardize equipment throughout the town as far as, you know, the boiler systems and...
So taking off the energy side of me from the facilities perspective, this would undoubtedly make my life much easier. The pieces that we're specifically interested in going after, I brought it forward to Capital Planning Committee, but we're not quite there yet, is that all of our building management systems that we have on the school side is, one, running off of a legacy product where it needs to be replaced anyways, and two, it's, we have multiple sets of systems, whereas the town has ultimately pretty much just standardized on a new Johnson control system. So from the building management system alone, that will yield not only energy savings, but it will also help standardize it. And then yet to get into boilers, rooftop units, again, lighting, lighting controls, there's, there's a lot of capital projects specifically on the school sides and some of the other buildings throughout town that will have some great opportunities for this.
Anyway, I've been concerned about this debt service that we have in town as far as the peak that we're looking at, and Dan and I had discussions about that. We've got a lot of major projects coming up. And so my concern is that who are going to add more to the debt? Does this payback start immediately? In other words, the debt doesn't see, doesn't really increase our overall debt for the town? Is something that would be paid for from the very beginning?
I know it was something that Eric was kind of alluding to.
That might be a Dan question.
Sure, I'll participate in this one. So we should see the energy savings as, you know, the projects run online, so we'll start to see that immediately. So typically with Westford, we don't permanently borrow the debt until the projects are complete and we have our final dollar figure. That way, we're not borrowing more than what we have to. And so we just borrow short-term in the meantime, which those rates are less than 0.3% at this point. So it'd be really short money during that time. But yes, this could be layered in. But the whole purpose of a performance contract is those savings that are generated within the operating budget, say for the schools, for instance, would then be shifted to the debt service budget. And so basically, you know, there's no impact to the schools, just less energy being used. And then that debt service budget would increase and pay for the, those projects.
So this is going to cover all the town facilities?
It depends on which projects you choose.
It depends on the projects we choose. Anita, I know you had a question.
Yeah, you know, I really appreciate sort of the strategic nature of this proposal, just that it's not piecemeal, because I feel like a lot of the things that come in through our budget are very piecemeal, sort of one after the other reactive. So I appreciate this is very planful and thoughtful and kind of standardizing across all of our town school buildings, right? Just trying to improve efficiency. I do have some questions that I scribbled down. One is, have any towns completed this process without an owner's agent?
Yes, well, I'm assuming so. There, there has to be a way. The benefit to the owner's agent is, one, we can make sure that the town initially is getting exactly what we want, and we make sure that the RFQ or RFP that we decide to go with help lines up. But two, there's further support that could be needed in the future from an owner's agent, specifically after the investment-grade audit is done. And as the, as the vendor that we're choosing, the ESCO that we bring aboard, as they're negotiating numbers with us for the guaranteed savings, that's something that an owner's agent can help make sure that they're sharpening the pencil on. So there's a, I'm going to guess that ultimately using, an owner's agent is ultimately basically like a consultant, and I'm going to guess that they're going to pay for themselves during this project.
There was, there was a slide about the mass energy insight and like the data that's collected through all of the buildings and households that's collected monthly or something. It sounds like, what's the current review process of that data? Does someone look at that monthly or annually or quarterly already? Like, do we already have that baseline data that's reviewed?
So we don't have an energy manager, per se, in town. I'm, I'm that person.
That would be you, Eric.
So, so I oversee the Green Communities Program. I provide annual reports to the program, so I do review it. I wouldn't say monthly, but we do track that, and it, we do have the capability of looking at a baseline weatherized, weather-normalized report to track our energy savings year to year. It's, it's, it's a nice tool that the state provides for free, and you know, it really makes projects like this easier to get off the ground because we have a lot of the data already put together.
Awesome. I am always in support of like inventory and baseline data, knowing where you start, right? And then the final question that I have is, like, other partners or other committees who you've spoken with, Matt, on, with the Clean Energy and Sustainability, like, committee, have you spoken with like the permanent town building committee, or is that under like Paul's purview? Or like, you know, even though the historical commission, if there are pieces of like some of our older buildings that would be, you know, impacted by this, I just want to make sure it's inclusive, all the voices and people who, you know, have a, have a say in this process are...
I know Eric's done a review of the town buildings as, as part of the estimate of the potential breakup fee. Maybe you can add to that.
Yeah, so we provided a rough list of what buildings might be included. An owner's agent may give us some guidance on which buildings you may not want to include, depending on the long-term use for that building or the expected useful life of it. But we certainly thought, following tonight, that this would go to the school committee to get their input, educate them on what's being happening, and we're happy to go to other boards and committees if that's what's desired.
Yeah, I would see value in, in getting buy-in from all the other committees that, you know, have a touch in this process. I would.
Scott, do you have any questions?
So yeah, I mean, I guess there's a guarantee here, which is, I mean, we've had a track record of, of energy efficiency investments in town, and, you know, some of them are quite, you know, simple, as you mentioned, LED lighting. And, you know, it has an obvious payback that you can measure. And others, we, it's all systems that, you know, are pretty finely engineered and take an engineer to run them. We never, never should see those gains because we have engineers, not engineers, you know. And so I guess my question is, A, you know, what is the training on these, on these systems if we, you know, go with like heating controls and so forth, or HVAC controls? You know, is there a training for our staff to make sure we can run them efficiently? And then, you know, what is, how's that guarantee work? Because if we don't see the estimated savings, is that something that we get a, you know, reimbursed from, like, how's that process work?
Eric?
Yeah, yeah, I can speak to this a little bit. So one of the first things that we did when, when, I guess, thinking about this project was we actually, there was a consultant that reached out to us that, that was obviously interested in, they said, hey, I want to see if there's any, you know, interest here in the town of Westford to do this. So I let them come, they came and did a free audit, just real simple, basic, to make sure that it was definitely worth it. During that time, the person had explained to us that, look, there's two types of guaranteed savings that they can ultimately go after. You kind of separate some of the projects. Typically, the electricity is done one way, and the, the, the gas or the heating side of it is done another way. As Scott alluded to, the electricity component of it, that's more fine and minute and really easy to see, that the lights are on or off, or based upon everything that's plugged into the building. So that is, again, something that definitely comes into the guaranteed savings contract where it'll be tougher for a consultant to, or it'll be tougher for an ESCO to say that they're not necessarily giving us that guaranteed savings. Again, an owner's agent will help us with that a little bit. On the gas side of it, they will also still have to prove why that, why the guaranteed savings that we were expecting were, were not met. So that is going to be on them for that. We take into, when taking these numbers into account, we'll take into whether normalization to help us, you know, come across with the numbers that we should be expecting to see here. So yes, it will be a little more challenging, but there's still a lot of onus on the owner's agent, or excuse me, on the ESCO that we hire to prove to us why we are not seeing that those savings there.
I'll just add.
Yep.
So the legislation that allows for the streamlined process for the performance contract actually goes into vivid detail about the measurement and verification process. So there are safeguards in place to protect the municipality's best interests.
Okay, thanks. So we've had some rate successes and some mixed successes, and as I recall, the mixed success was a function of just complex systems. And if it sounds like that's being, you know, taken care of legislatively, that is under protection, I'm, I'm fine with, you know, curtailation to make things more efficient.
Tom?
Yeah, I mean, it's exciting to have a systematic and thoughtful approach, like Anita was mentioning, to something this important. And Scott, that's a great question that I want to think more about in terms of how the guarantee actually works. But I guess I just wanted to review what exactly we're, we're asking for in the sequence.
That was my question is...
Yeah. What do you want tonight?
What do you want tonight? And also sort of, where do we go from here in a timeline? I mean, we're talking about, is this a six-month? Is this a 12, a 12-month? I guess I'm trying to understand.
Okay. So our goal is to try to get this off the ground as quick as possible. Last year, we had just missed the technical assistance grant, so we had decided to postpone this whole process through the pandemic, and unfortunately, we lost a whole year with a lot of things. So we're trying to get this off the ground, and we really need the seed money to get an owner's agent on board to work with us to do solicitation process and to identify an ESCO that would be advantageous for the town to move forward with. Once we have the owner's agent and we have a selected ESCO company, eventually, we will need a town meeting appropriation for the break fee, which would be at the October town meeting.
Can you just remind me the amount? And you've got, you've got a source that you've identified?
Correct. So the DRA capital count, for those who are familiar, when we did the large DRA capital facility study, which identified millions upon millions of dollars of facilities' needs throughout the town, we had, I believe it was two appropriations now, right, Dan? The first one was for $400,000, and we appropriated a second $200,000 to start to address some of the needs that were identified in the DRA capital report. We provide an update every year to the Capital Planning Committee on which projects we plan to try to accomplish in the following fiscal year. As of right now, due to the pandemic, we've had some delays in some of those projects. But we do have currently $75,000 left unspent, and the thought is we could use $15,000 from this and potentially replenish it with the technical assistance grant if obtained. The idea is that this is specifically facilities-related, and eventually, this will, you know, turn into an overall facilities project, which will obtain large savings for the town.
So 15 tonight potentially to be reimbursed by a grant?
Correct.
Okay. So you are looking for a motion for...
Oh, yes. So we look for a motion to...
Help you out.
Yeah, sorry about that. A lot of talking tonight.
You're looking for a motion for us to support and, and also to authorize...
The use of 15,000.
The use of $15,000 from the DRA fund to hire an owner's agent. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Got it.
I'm very happy to make the motion. Is there any community?
Wait, um, hang on a minute, Scott. Is anybody from the audience? I thought you asked that. Okay, no. Scott?
I just want to say that, you know, my, my opinion, the DRA study was one of the best that we've ever done in terms of, of actionability. You know, we do a lot of studies sometimes at the shelf. That one was very practical in terms of, you know, parties 1, 2, and 3, and cost A, B, and C, and, you know, really gave us a good laid plan for over many years for capital, you know, improvement. So if this was to work like a DRA, that would be, you know, really quite a good success.
Okay. All right.
Do we need the school committee's buy-in before this? If it's town and school, or we could still move forward?
We can still move forward with it, yeah. Particularly because I don't think the school committee meets in the summer.
Right. School committee here.
Matt?
Yes, I just want to add that part of the urgency to this is that we would like to have the industry-grade audit during the wintertime. That's the most effective way to assess the energy efficiency of buildings. So our timeline is to get the owner's agent on board to help us start the process so that we can potentially select an ESCO this fall after we've received the DOE grant funding, and then potentially have dollar value to bring to Special Town Meeting to ask for that potential breakup fee. And then, if authorized, then go to the industry-grade audit this winter and not skip another year.
Got it. Thank you. That was helpful. He did. All right. Is there a motion?
I'm, I'm happy to make the motion to allocate $15,000 from the DRA capital account to support the engagement of an owner's agent.
Second.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay, seeing none. John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you all very much for your hard work. Christina, you're standing there. Do you have a comment or...
I do have a comment, but...
Okay.
Okay. Christina Green, I'm really happy that you guys have gone forward, forward with this, so I'm excited. And I would just like to find out, once you're, once you have an owner's agent on board and you're going through the ESCO, ESCO? What is it?
ESCO.
Choosing an ESCO and doing the RFP, RFQ, all of that, what is that going to look like? Who's going to be involved with that?
I think we'd be looking for input from the select board at some point.
We'll get back to you on that.
Are you volunteering?
If it's appropriate, well, if it's appropriate, which I think it is, I would like to ask for a FINCOM member to be on that committee.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much for your hard work on this. Very much appreciated, and thank you for bringing it to our attention tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
All right. Okay. Moving right along, we are at old and new business. We have already rescinded the local state of emergency. A request to proceed with the recreational feasibility study. Is Chris here?
He's right there.
Chris?
And I just wanted to tell you that unfortunately, Jim Dwayne had a family emergency, so he won't be able to join us tonight, but he felt fully confident that Chris could take the lead on this.
I am fully confident that Chris can do this also. You're up.
We're up. Oh.
I'm not speaking.
Yeah, it's all right. Yes. All right. Good evening. I'm Chris Barrett, member of the Park and Rec Commission. With me this evening is my colleague Kathleen Burns, also a Park and Rec Commission member. Thank you so much for having us. We're here to ask for your support to move forward with the feasibility study for a recreation center for Westford. This was something that has been under conversation for a very long time. Recently, at the town meeting in 2020, there was a determination to sort of put a hold on the feasibility... a hold on the feasibility studies for both this project as well as the school administration offices, and then, of course, with, with COVID, that sort of, sort of cooled things off even more. Uh, but we'd like to talk a little bit of tonight, especially to some of the new members, about where we're coming from with this, and then, what we hope to get out of this study. I know it's, your meeting's running a little late, so it's going to be very brief, but my comments, if I could move to the next slide, please? So, this is just some of the key milestones that we've went through, uh, as we've gone through, uh, as we got to today. And really, one of the key things that I want to point out is that this question of whether or not Westford can have a recreation center at pool, uh, started back in 2003 with a master plan that was done then. Uh, there was a group that was formed, uh, lots of people looked into this. I don't really know what happened to that effort, uh, but kind of went cool at that point, uh, and wasn't until the 2015, 2016 recreation master plan, um, that this topic had come back up again. One of the recommendations from that master plan was to do a feasibility study. Uh, so, acting upon that, we came before the select board, asked for their support, got that support, went for funding from, um, the Community Preservation Committee, they were supportive. We eventually had to pull back the article for that because community preservation funds can't be used for an indoor facility. So, we came back to the select board, uh, said, hey, can we go to the general fund for this funding? Said, yes. Uh, we eventually did get that funding at 2017 town meeting. Um, it was not unanimous, but largely supported by the community that asked. And between that, um, the select board had asked us to do some, uh, further, uh, analysis of public opinion in terms of what really the town wanted in terms of recreation resources. So, we engaged another consulting company, did a town-wide survey, randomized, uh, 2,000 households, and came back with, again, some data that showed that this is a project that should move forward. So, that brought us to around 2018. Um, we unfortunately lost our park and rec director to retirement, and that kind of put the project on hold again. 2019, we were ready to rock and roll on it, but we were fortunate to get $100,000 from Jim Arciero to kickstart a project over at Forge Beach, which we kind of said, hey, we got to get this done, we don't want to lose this money. So, all hands on deck, focused on that project, and got that project finished, and it's, uh, it's awesome over there, if you haven't been over there, beautiful playground, and it's really, really nice. So, 2020 comes around, around March of 2020, we were ready to, uh, put the RFQ out, and of course, we all know what happened then. So, we think at this point, uh, it makes a lot of sense to restart the conversation. If we could move to the next slide? The reason why is we know that there's a lot of other planning that needs to happen at a strategic level in this community regarding municipal buildings and facilities. This study is really trying to answer some key questions about whether or not Westford could support a facility that has a pool, has some recreation space. What we're looking to figure out here is, you know, get the hard numbers. What's the revenue that a facility like this can generate? What are the costs associated with it? Looking at the capital impacts, uh, longer-term of running a facility like this, evaluating the costs and the benefits to see if it makes sense. And if it doesn't, great, we've answered a question that's been around since 2003. Uh, it will make a lot of residents happy. If it does, then, you know, we're going to have to have some further conversations. We have a lot of strategic needs, how this would fit into that remains to be seen, but at least we'll have the data at that point to have a meaningful conversation, and I think that's one of the key objectives here, is to get that data. So, we're asking you, uh, for that support so that we can move forward with this process. We have, you know, um, support from the park and rec director, uh, the athletic director of Westford Academy wants to be part of this initiative. I've, uh, asked Paul Fox over here if he would be helpful, happy to help out with it, and he said yes. So, I think we got a good group of people to start the process and, uh, come up with a good project at the end of the day.
Okay, thank you. Uh, questions, comments? Anita?
I, I, obviously, you've had approval several times from the town and from the board, so it makes sense to move forward with it. I just have one question around the timing of it, and approximately how long a study like this would take, because my concern is just that if you get to a yes, right, if the feasibility study says yes, but then the town is behind in, in, as it sometimes is slower with the strategic planning piece, then by the time that data is used, it's old, right? And so, then I, that's my only worry, but, um, I would support this, um, and everything. I just have that comment question.
It's a great question, and I, for one, I totally understand where you're coming from. Obviously, uh, we do have a lot of studies that the town does, uh, not necessarily feasibility for recreation centers, but other, you know, intersection studies and other public safety things that we do, and, you know, we don't get a chance to, to jump on those right away, and, and that is not great from an efficiency standpoint. Um, I'm hopeful that, you know, this study usually does a five-year horizon in terms of its evaluation of costs and revenue, so we'll have a little bit of, of leeway there. Um, you're absolutely right, and we may have to get, uh, you know, an update if we go too far from when this, this study is completed and, you know, get around to actually doing something with it.
Other questions? Scott, any questions?
Uh, yeah, you know, I mean, certainly, as Chris has mentioned, this has been a, a idea that's been out there and supported for, for some time, just, uh, to any, we have a question, I'm remembering a couple of things. One is, I know we did that town-wide, you know, uh, I guess, assessment or request for, you know, for interest, with, because you mentioned the pool, of course, the pool would be your, your trophy, um, element into the building, but you also want to think about, is there indoor, what, racquetball, basketball, you know, whatever else that might be in there? Is that something that is part of the feasibility study, or is that going to be used, uh, or use the results of that survey to inform that? I guess make sure we, we get the right elements in the building, how, how make sure that...
Yes, Scott, thank you. That's a great question. So, a lot of that will draw upon actually the, the information we got from the master plan, in which we did have the, the analysis of what we have in terms of recreational resources currently available, basketball courts, tennis courts, racquetball courts, volleyball courts, that sort of thing. They compare what our inventory is today versus what are recommended levels that we should have, uh, for a population of our size. Um, and some of those, uh, deltas, in other words, where we, we didn't have enough of one thing, um, I think would be an area that we would look to maybe possibly include in this analysis. However, I will say, the recreation master plan was fairly specific in terms of its recommendation, so I believe it was, you know, an aquatics, an indoor recreation facility with an indoor aquatics component, including, you know, facilities for rowing and other recreational space. So, I guess you could say, you know, that other recreational space, is that basketball courts? Probably not. Is it a racquetball court or some sort of multipurpose, uh, type of gymnasium? That might be more appropriate, but I think that's something that we should cover with the consultants that we hire and, and see how that plays out.
I guess, the, the second question is on, I guess, and I don't know, uh, I remember Mark Cox asked this question, and I, I forget the answer, so are there, as part of the feasibility study, you mentioned revenues versus expense, are there multiple business plans that they would look at, or is it basically, uh, one side to talk, represent a picture?
No, absolutely not. So, in the, in the, uh, recreation feasibility studies that I have reviewed that include an aquatics component, generally, there's multiple scenarios that are evaluated. Um, one reason for that is because of so many different configurations that an aquatic component can come in. And I know we talk a lot about the aquatic component, but we have to, because this is, you know, arguably probably the most costly and largest component of the facility, so it does require that extra attention. So, you could have a pool that's, say, you know, six lanes, 25 yards, that's the absolute smallest really that you would want to consider. Upwards to an elliptic-sized facility that's 50 meters, you could have multiple pools. So, if you think of the BD Center in Concord, it has a separate diving well, it has a lap pool, it has a, a therapy pool, and then has a shallow, you know, uh, entry pool for kids. Um, so I think, you know, as part of the development, we might be looking at a scenario that, you know, maybe evaluates, uh, one type of pool versus another, or one type of pool mixed with this type of recreation component versus another. I also would love to see this, uh, evaluate public and private partnerships to see what sort of legs that type of idea has in this community, um, as well as maybe a regional partnership with other communities. I mean, Chelmsford certainly has the same difficulties that we have in terms of, you know, finding pool time, for example. So, I, I like to keep that, uh, option on the table. I know when we met with representatives from Chelmsford, they were very interested. How we would structure something like that, uh, in the end, you know, remains to be seen, but I'd like to keep that on the table. So, that might be a scenario, the public-private partnership might be a scenario, then we might have a couple of scenarios where we're looking at different types of configurations for the facility.
Okay, excellent, thanks, but that's why I kind of recall, wasn't sure, so, uh, thanks.
You're welcome.
Tom?
So, you've got support from the community multiple ways for doing this, so I'm glad we're doing it. Um, I think last time this came up, the, it's sort of the elephant in the room was, this is an expensive project, I think you give some numbers, um, and so, uh, I'm glad you brought the idea of regional, considering a regional partnership, because I think having as many pathways to success here would help. It's much easier to imagine this, this being something that the town could prioritize and vote for, if we're talking tens of millions of dollars, if you had multiple communities that were bought in or public-private partnerships, so I'm glad that's part of it. Is that actually part of the, the consultant work, or is that something the committee would do? Now we've got a facilities idea, we've got some revenue ideas, now we're going to go shop it with other people, or is it actually inside the RFP?
So, I like to get it inside the RFP. Uh, I think that makes a lot more sense if we find, you know, in an ideal world, a consultancy that has had some, some experience, uh, forging those public-private partnerships. Uh, I think that's going to be one of the more tricky aspects of the conversation, how easy it will be to find a consultant firm that will be able to analyze the aquatics component, uh, and, you know, do they, can they structure a proper, a public-private partnership as well, you know, remains to be seen, but that will be, you know, sort of our gold standard. If we can get that, that's where we want to be. We have talked with, you know, some private entities in the community to gauge their interest in participating in the study. They have expressed interest in participating. Um, we have talked with, uh, the folks at Michoacan Regional Tech a few years ago, um, about potentially looking at that regional component, the idea being, if you look at the Michoacan Regional Tech and think about how they already are set up for the idea of, of pulling in from multiple, uh, uh, towns, that framework is already there. Uh, now, they love the idea, but weren't really ready to commit. Um, they have other projects on their, on their list. Now, have things changed in the three years since we approached them? Maybe. So, we, we certainly plan on talking with them again and just making sure that, you know, hey, has anything happened on your side that you may want to reconsider? Because I do think that would be an ideal way of, of structuring that type of regional arrangement if we are able to do it. It's a centralized location, they have space on their campus, um, so, you know, that, that I think we'd like to keep on the table.
It's a good idea.
All right. Any comments from the audience?
I have one other question while, while I'm thinking of it.
Sure.
So, I guess, I, I presume for it's part of the, uh, study, they would, you know, talk to our, I'm thinking of the PD Center, who might want to have, uh, you know, sometimes seniors with our, our school teams, and I'm guessing that this consultant would then, you know, proactively approach for a, um, a facility in town that would, would use this kind of facility?
Yes, so determining, uh, the program usability is a key component of determining revenue, so, uh, based off of the size of the facility, we could generate various revenue models based off of, you're looking at how many, you know, let's say USS teams and other club teams are in the area, how many high schools need programming time, how many youth programs need programming time, how many senior, you know, do we have who might be interested in doing, uh, Aqua-related exercise? Um, that's all, in my opinion, part of that programming exercise and, and determining what those numbers are to generate that revenue number, so absolutely.
Okay. All right. Um, is there a motion to support, uh, the request to proceed with the recreation feasibility study?
So moved.
Okay. Um, all those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your support. Uh, we'll obviously keep you involved as much as possible as we go down this journey. Uh, one quick note, I don't know if, if leadership knows this, but, uh, unfortunately, our, what is it, six-time state championship high school team has lost their home.
Eight.
So, eight, eight times, sorry, eight times, wow. So, they were previously, they had been swimming at the University of Lowell, that pool was shut down during COVID, and now they've decided not to reopen. So, we have this wonderful community of, of strong student athletes who are without a home. I think there's a lot of community effort to try and help them, but I want to just out, throw it out to the public, if anybody can help, if anybody knows of a pool that wants to host our awesome team, we'd love to hear from you, either myself or Kathleen, so, or Jeff Bunyan, so, thanks again for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
It's wonderful to be here first again.
I know, it is nice. All right. Um, we are at our next item, which is to reevaluate suspended collection of the Rodenbush Community Center, uh, rent payments, um, as a result of, uh, programming, or the disruption of programming during COVID. Hello, Michelle.
Hi.
It's nice to see you.
Nice to actually see you guys two in person, it's been a while. I'm Michelle Sullivan, Executive Director at the Rodenbush Community Center.
So, we, um, where are we?
Well, outdoors, as of, you know, when the governor lifted the restrictions, May 29th, we have no, um, capacity limitations any longer. We have added, um, two more staff to finally get our community education classes up and running. So, it's a little bit slow this summer, but I think the fall we'll see a return to a pretty active building, which is going to be great, and, um, the childcare departments, you know, we need to build up some staffing again, but, you know, it, it's hopeful.
Are you, I guess, for the immediate, are you running programs this summer?
We are.
Okay. And I guess, um, I think it, maybe either you or Dan, um, if you could, um, just kind of run through the final, not you, I meant Michelle or Dan, I know not you, Erica. Just the current, um, financial picture of Rodenbush and where we are and...
Sure.
Yep.
Like down the screen.
And also, I know, um, just for folks, what, um, uh, what the rent will be as of July 1st.
Right.
Because it changes as of July 1st.
Uh, do you want to run through it, or...
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, um, back in, you know, when the, uh, TRCCI first requested, uh, cash on hand was about $88,000 at that point in time, and things were looking bleak. Um, I believe through, through some, uh, forgivable loans, um, that, yeah, balance, and the programs that started up, started collecting money again as well, so the cash balance as of May 31st increased to $490,000. So, things are looking good. Uh, most of that's in deferred income, which means it's future programs that, um, you've collected revenue for and...
And it's the loan, it's the loan, which we did apply for forgiveness, but we haven't heard yet.
Great, so that's, um, basically where they're at, at this point in time. Uh, they attached a income statement as well, so, um, just looking at, you know, the made profit and loss, uh, they had a total income of $129,000. It's nine, right? Twenty-nine, yeah. And, uh, expenses right at 129 as well, so a net of $4 at income.
We couldn't get closer, 54, but yeah.
So, um, yeah, in, in, included in that is rental expenses in that of the 3,100 for the month as well, so, um, things are looking better than they were, uh, right in the high of the pandemic, so, um, oh, anyone to see what we had so far to date? I have that now on there as well. So, down, that's the agenda. There we go. So, I put the table together of the rent, uh, for FY '21. So I put the table together of the rent for FY '21. The first two quarters the town did collect came out to just over $13,000. The January 1st, 2021 was abated at net funds of $13,875. And then April 1st was also delayed, $11,576. So a total of $25,451 was not collected in fiscal year '21. According to lease, in FY '22, the rent increases to, from $9,300 to $10,000. And this is when the repayment of the waived rent and debt service for the Rodenbush building start to kick in. We also listed our additional rent we have there for things like snow plowing and trash recycling pickup. So total rent is going from, and this is not taking account our share of the portion of utilities, it'll be lower than $19,000, but it'll be somewhere in the $18,000 range each month moving forward from about $13,000 per month.
Okay.
Tom?
Well, I was going to ask, the question...
I was going to say, you can ask her if she hasn't asked.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, the question or the question, either the asker or the question. One is what happens to the deferred rent? That's a separate issue. And then the other is, based on your cycle of business and what you're seeing, do you feel like, as you look out the next quarter, you're in a position to begin to paying rent?
I think so. I mean, any consideration is obviously appreciated, but we are hoping to get that. We don't see why we wouldn't have the loan forgiven, but it hasn't happened yet. And I don't, we don't know the timeline for those things.
Is that PPP loan?
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. We spent that very quickly with the amount of staff we brought back in order to run programs.
Other questions or comments? And then I have one. Go ahead, John.
So if we went ahead with the regular scheduled lease payments, what impact would that have on you versus an abatement?
It's really tricky to know. It's, I mean, our childcare departments are doing really well. It remains to be seen how much the town wants to come back to community education, you know, and that, that will be interesting to see. It's hard to know right this moment, but we're, again, more hopeful than we were a year ago. And with the restrictions lifted, it was just at the end of May. So of course, we're scrambling, but like other childcare centers in town, you know, everybody wants to get back up to their numbers. And again, waiting to see if the demand is still there.
So I guess, you know, my feeling right now, I mean, looking at the fact that you have $490,000 in cash reserves and you're open...
Yep.
And hopefully running, going to be running full, you know, programs throughout the summer and starting with fall, and the people will come back to Rodenbush because it, you know. My feeling is, is that as of July 1st, you start paying rent again. And if for some reason, you know, it craters and the whole program craters or something happens, then we can revisit it. But I think, you know, we, you know, you got, you know, half a year of basically, in my, you know, I know we didn't talk about it, I considered it a baited rent, you know, for the six months and as opposed to deferred, that we just were going, that was gone, is that as of July 1st, you know, you start paying rent again.
Right.
Scott, do you have any comments? I don't want you to think, I don't want you to think I'm forgetting about you.
No, you know, I think it's perfectly in the spirit of what we had discussed before, which was, you know, make it a short-term decision and reevaluate. And I think we're probably back, you know, as a slightly faster, we thought we would be. I didn't think we'd be, you know, basically out of urgency in May. So, yeah, I'm with, I think the board consensus that we should, you know, put it right back online come the 1st, July 1st.
Okay. Were you going to say something?
Can I clarify something?
Yes.
So the 24,000, the 25,451, would we not collect that and just start the FY '22 payments as illustrated here?
That was my understanding.
That was my understanding.
Okay.
I don't know if that was, I know you weren't part of it, John, so you can't, but that was my understanding. I don't know, Anita, Tom, or Scott, if that was your understanding or...
I'm honestly trying to recall. My thought would be that we would only try, that we would only be paying current rent from here.
I specifically asked, and Mark spoke to that...
Yeah.
During our last meeting.
Yeah, I think I remember that too.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, my impression of that is we were not going to, we want this program to thrive. We were not going to title it with, you know, abatement. It was, with deferred, it was abated.
Yep. I agree with that.
Okay. So I guess we should probably have a motion to, basically to start collecting rent again as of July 1st.
It's just kind of the abatement.
Yeah.
Andrea, one thing, could I just, procedurally, can we just have a motion to...
Oh, right.
Issue a grant in the form of a rent waiver in the amount of $25,451 so we comply with the Chapter 30B?
Right. I asked Eric to clarify with Town Council, you know, the procedure and what we needed to do. And so Town Council has told us that we need to authorize a grant to Rodenbush in that amount to be in compliance with Massachusetts general laws. So I guess, actually, you're right. So that would be the first motion is to authorize a grant in the amount of $25,451. So is there such a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. And now a motion to begin to collect rent as of...
So I'll make a motion to, to end the abatement period and begin collection of rent as per contract as of July 1st.
Is there a second? Second, okay. All those in favor, I'll go backwards this time. Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. I know it's been a hard year for you and hopefully Rodenbush, along with everybody else, will start to recover and return to pre-pandemic...
Thank you. And we really do appreciate the past support very much. All right. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Really nice to see you in person.
Okay. We are at item four, a request from the Westford Affordable Housing Trust to approve an intermunicipal agreement with the Westford Housing Authority to provide program administrative services for a new emergency rental assistance program. Joni, come on up. And Drew?
Drew is not here.
Drew is not here.
So, hi, I'm Joni Krodo. I am the current interim Chair of Affordable Housing, the Affordable Housing Trust. We have this memo in front of you. We, during the COVID period, spent a great deal of time working and looking at the need in Westford for rental assistance for families who are greatly impacted. There are programs in the state, DHCD, Mass Housing Partnership and CHAPA, who are promoting these programs in other towns. So we basically followed suit, put together a subcommittee of the Affordable Housing Committee at the time. And with that subcommittee, did our investigations, spoke with local rental agencies to see who, you know, who was having trouble, who was collecting rent, who was having, people starting to see the effects of COVID, job loss, income loss. We also talked, spent a great deal of time talking with Jennifer Claro from the director, who is the Director of Elder Services, Allison Christopher, the town social worker. And Allison was of great help in really identifying a need, that there is a great need in the town of Westford. So we put together with Eric's help, a IFB to request an agent to administer this program because there are obviously a lot of state laws that you have to follow. There are income requirements as far as median income. There are other state rental assistance programs, but they have caps. So there are, there is a RAFT program, there is a, that is administered by an agency called CTI, Community Teamwork in Lowell. But that program has caps. And we were finding that even if people could get that rental assistance, that they were basically running out of assistance. Also, that rental assistance program had income caps at the time. You couldn't be above 80% of area median income. Well, what about those people that were above that, that were up to 100% of area median income that were also having trouble? There was a big gap. So we realized that, you know, housing, the housing trust certainly couldn't administer this type of thing. So we did this IFB, like I said, with Eric's help, to get an agent. And Westford Housing Authority was the successful bidder. And since then, what we have done is...
[inaudible]
Sorry. Since then, what we've done is we actually, at our last meeting, voted to allocate $30,000 of CPC funds towards this initiative. And we are here tonight to ask you to approve a contract and allow us to go forward. Let me just clarify that last statement. The $30,000 of CPC funds is funds that CPC has previously allocated to the Affordable Housing Trust fund. So it's in our, it's in our balance sheet already. So these are past funds that were now, that the trust voted to allocate for both administration and for rental assistance for those folks who may need it. So, so, Tom?
Very happy to support this. The, is there a good way for us to understand sort of the scale of need? I feel like just for my own interest in the public, do you have a sense of how many homes or how many families we're hoping to serve that have been under duress during this time that haven't been eligible for the RAFT program, for example?
Well, we know of, with Allison's help, of at least four to maybe up to six families that could definitely use this help. And we expect that there are probably more, you know, once Lisa Larrabee from, who is the Director of the Housing Authority, as she works through the process, I'm expecting there'll probably be even more than that.
Any other questions? Scott, any question?
No, I've been, you know, I've been...
Yeah, I know. I know you have. Okay. Is there, is there a motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement with the Westford Housing Authority?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Scott, you're up.
By the time we talk to Scott, I'm ready to jump up and answer a question.
We have a request from the ZBA to appoint Scott D. Fitzgerald as a full member for a term expiring June 30th, 2024, and to appoint Dan Britko as an alternate member for a term expiring June 30th, 2026. I think it's pretty straightforward. Anybody have any questions or comments? I don't see any, so...
Very happy to make that motion.
And Tom, is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Any board reports or updates? Yes, Anita?
I sat in on NIMCOG last week and stuff. I just wanted people to know, Beverly, if anyone knows Beverly Wood, she's retiring at the end of the year.
Oh.
After 40 years with the organization. And Jay Donovan, who's also with NIMCOG, he's retiring after 20 years in October. So they are going, undergoing a lot of change.
Wow.